Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Present.
Present.
Present. Counsel Regis, Counsel Vandal, seven here.
Agenda item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, December 3rd, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports. Four A, General Government.
No report and no meeting scheduled, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Four B, DPW.
Thank you. Myself, subcommittee member counselors, Makuchi, council delegates, citizen members, Mark Moran and Jim Pioppi. Also in attendance were counselors Clemens, counselor Landman, counselor Regis, town manager Clark, and DPW director Tom Daly. Agenda, we had a bunch of agenda items. And agenda item number one was review and vote to obtain authorization to enter into contract according to MGL chapter 30B with JSL Asphalt Permaline Corporation, New England, Place Motors and Hall and Chemical with vendors that we spend more than $5,000 per year and to submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by counselor Makuchi and seconded by counselor Peliquin that the contracts with JSL Asphalt Permaline Corporation of New England and Place Motors be tabled until further information is gathered, vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda item number two, review and vote to enter into contract with HR Prescott and Sons Incorporated in the amount of $135,000 annually for water supply materials with an option to extend contract for two additional years with a 12% increase for FY 2014 and an 8% increase for FY 2015 and to submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by counselor Makuchi and seconded by counselor Peliquin with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the contract with HR Prescott and Sons Incorporated in the amount of $135,000 annually for water supply materials with an option to extend contract for two additional years with a 12% increase for FY 2014 and 8% increase in FY 2015, vote by show of hand, five to zero. Agenda item number three, review and vote to enter into contract with Worldwide Industries Corporation in the amount of $347,000 to appropriate funding for retained earnings in the amount of $400,000 to add cathodic protection to the tank and install a mixing system to address icing, interior tank damage, fire protection, water quality issues inside the tank and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Daly stated, "We have been carrying $500,000 in the budget for the past few years anticipating this work." Bids were submitted by Worldwide Industries Corporation was the lowest bidder and he has been recommended by the engineer. Vote by show of hands, three for one against, three in favor and one against. Agenda item number four, discuss status of backhoe. Mr. Daly stated that there has been some misconception perception on the retaining and or trade of the backhoe and he wanted to clear the air. Mr. Daly stated he would never intentionally mislead or deceive the subcommittee or council and apologize for any misunderstanding that was perceived and if the council is uncomfortable with keeping the backhoe, he will put it on the auction block in the spring, summer. Mr. Daly stated it was never his intent to deceive anyone and in trying to think outside the box. He thought the front loader could be put to use without using the backhoe. Mr. Pioppi feels the backhoe is working properly and that there are no problems with the machine. He believes a system should be put in place to evaluate any machinery being retired, replaced before procuring new equipment. Mr. Daly will go back to his staff and confirm the details of use and usefulness of the equipment. Agenda item number five, discuss possibility of keeping the compost containers open during the winter. Mr. Daly said the Board of Health and DPW have been having discussions on this issue. Mr. Daly said Casella will be taking a more responsible role for the maintenance of these containers. There has been some illegal dumping at this site. A motion to adjourn was made by counselor Makuchi and seconded by counselor Peliquin. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Meeting adjourned at 8:35 PM, respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item four C, Education and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, December 11th, 2012 in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Makuchi, counselor Moriarty, citizen members Holly Cristo, Martina Shea. Also in attendance were counselors Landman, Town Manager Clark, James Moran and Bob Chakoski. Counselor Clemens was excused. Chairwoman Makuchi called the meeting to order at 6:55 PM. Agenda item number one, review and vote to extend the contract with Green Brown Consultant for another six months through June 30th, 2013 to continue service under the original contract and to allocate $18,000 to fulfill this contract through FY 2013. This extension would include the allocation of $22,000 to continue police enforcement and $14,000 for education and advertising for other efforts relating to the recycling efforts and to present to council for ratification. Mr. Clark explained that the funds were appropriated in May 2012. Green Brown's contract is a one-year, calendar year contract covering two fiscal years. Mr. Moran gave a presentation on the recycling efforts. Attached was Mr. Moran's presentation and it is working quite well for the town of Southbridge. A question and answer session followed with Mr. Moran explaining where the recycling program was, where it is now and where he wants it to go. A motion was made by Holly Cristo and seconded by Martina Shea with her favorable recommendation to council to extend the contract with Green Brown Consultant for another six months through June 30th, 2013 to continue services under the original contract and to allocate $18,000 to fulfill this contract through FY 2013. This extension would include the allocation of $22,000 to continue police enforcement and $14,000 for education and advertising and for all other efforts relating to the recycling efforts. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Agenda item number two, review and vote to appropriate change order number 11 in the amount of $79,934 to incorporate change requests submitted by Consigly Construction and review by Tapp and Jocelyn Lesser to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark gave an overview of the change order. He said, "We are still under 1% of the change orders. One or two more change orders are expected. This project is wrapping up with the exception of the fields that require two to three growing seasons." A motion was made by counselor Moriarty, seconded by Holly Cristo with a favorable recommendation of council to approve change order number 11 in the amount of $79,934 to incorporate change requests submitted by Consigly Construction and review by Tapp, Jocelyn and Lesser. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Agenda item number three, preliminary discussion regarding the concussion bylaw. Counselor Moriarty stated he doesn't think that this should necessarily be a bylaw, but it needs to be addressed. He feels some concussion training should be done. This bylaw is constructed after the Ashland, the town of Ashland, their bylaw. Mr. Moran suggested that this be a policy-type rule rather than a fine bylaw. A hearing panel should be formed with members from different departments. The first violation would be a written warning and a second violation would go before the hearing panel. If they are found guilty, then they would be removed from town fields until compliance is done. Mr. Clark suggested that this should be a joint discussion with the Rec Committee, the Board of Health and the Council. The Board of Health will put a committee together and report back. And this was referred to the Board of Health. Agenda item number four, discuss the town of Charlton and the use of barefoot sanitary landfill. Mr. Clark stated he researched the reason for the use of the landfill by the town of Charlton. In his research, he found that in 2007, a land swap was done with the town of Charlton and in return, they could use the landfill. But there was never an agreement made or executed. Agenda item number five, discuss and vote to appropriate a liaison to the school committee. Brief discussion was held on the reasons for having a liaison between the town and the school. This would provide an information pipeline between the two boards and increase communication. Another suggestion was that there might be a joint meeting of the two boards on a regular basis. Just for a point of interest, I did speak with the chairman of the school committee and she is in agreement that we meet three to four times a year, a couple times before pre-budget and thereafter. So she is on board with us as far as having meetings. A motion to adjourn was made by counselor Moriarty and seconded by Martina Shea. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Called the, adjourned the meeting at 8:40 PM, respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. And Madam Chair, I do not have a meeting scheduled, another meeting at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Makuchi. Four D is planning and development and we have had no meetings and there are no meetings scheduled at this time. So four E, protections of persons and property.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting on protection of person and property, subcommittee, was held on Tuesday, December 11th, 2012 in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Landman, Counsel Regis, citizen members Roger Kawett, and Manique Manor. Also in attendance was Counsel Makuchi, Counsel Moriarty, Town Manager Clark, Police Chief Sharette and Holly Cristo. Counselor McDonnell was absent. Chairman Landman called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to approve the proposed change for street parking in the area of Charlton Street School in the intersection of Golford Road and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark stated that the police chief was concerned about the parking in the area. Neighbors went to the traffic commission meeting to express their concerns and compromise was made for the no parking zone. A motion was made by Counsel Regis and seconded by Manique Manor with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the proposed change for street parking in the area of Charlton Street School in the intersection of Golford Road. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Agenda item number two, vote to transfer funds in the amount of $14,610 from the town council reserve to the police department capital account to replace cruiser number 220 that was involved in an accident on 9/15/12 and considered a total loss and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark stated that the cruiser was involved in an action, was three years old and he received $13,452 from the insurance claim. Chief Sharette said the vehicle they are looking at is a leftover 2011 brand-new cruiser. All the equipment we have can be put on this 2011 cruiser. The normal price for this vehicle would be $35,000. A motion was made by Counsel Regis, seconded by Manique Manor with a favorable recommendation to council to transfer the funds of the amount of $14,610 from the council reserve to the police department capital account to replace cruiser number 220 that was involved in the accident on 9/15/12, considered a total loss. Vote by show of hands, three, four, one abstained. A motion was adjourned and was made by Manique Manor and seconded by Counsel Regis. Vote by show of hands, four to nothing, all in favor. And at this time, Madam Chair, I have no other meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Agenda item number five, Chairwoman's announcements. Well, currently, I am filling in for Chairwoman Nicola this evening. She can't be with us. So I don't have anything from the town side to announce. However, this past week, as we are very much aware, there was a terrible tragedy that occurred and at this time, I think it would be very appropriate to offer a moment of silence for all those affected. So if you could please join me. Thank you. We're going to move on to agenda item number six, the town manager's announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items this evening. First, in terms of the council packages, we'll have two weeks without packages so that way you won't have the re-material during the holidays. And we will start up again in the new year. Also, we will, we have closed Old South Road. That is closed for the winter season. If the season is mild and we can open it early in the season, we will. And then, I would like to just kind of publicly thank the Southbridge Savings Bank. Donated $715 to the Jacob Edwards Library in Southbridge to benefit its after-school Lego club. So I thought that was a nice gesture and just wish to acknowledge that thoughtful gift. Also, I received a visit from gentlemen from DCR, from the State Division of Conservation and Recreation. And we went over and looked at the Petro pool and that is basically done. They will be doing final grass seed and such in the spring. So that will be ready to come online next, I guess, pool season, June, July, August. They do want to have a conversation with us about eventually the town taking on more of a role in that pool. So we will have some initial discussions and present recommendations back to the council with what directions we may want to consider or the council may want to consider. Also, we did release the executive session minutes due to the diligent requests of a member of the council. We have got that done. So I am happy to report, we have those on file down at the town clerk's office. And then lastly, I just wish to acknowledge the holidays and just wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe and prosperous new year from my family to the residents and to the employees and to the council of Southbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We're going to move on to agenda item number seven, swearing in and presentations. Seven A is the MassCon Sustainable Forest Partnership with Catherine Blake.
I don't know if the projector's on, if someone maybe could look.
Sometimes they shut down when they weren't, when they are in.
When they're idle too long. Perhaps you can just do a verbal overview until we can get the projector on.
If you could just pull the mic closer to you a little bit there. It's not on.
They had that running earlier.
It's a few technicals.
It's coming up.
Now that he's out here, there's still. Here we go. Yeah, just speak up, it'll come on in a second. There you go. Oh, there it is. So MassCon is working with numerous partners and we're seeking letters of support for a proposal that seeks to designate a new forest legacy area under the Forest Legacy Program. This area includes Southbridge. We feel that this proposal would address the mission of the program, protecting important threatened private forest lands in the U.S. So I was asked to come today to give a brief presentation of the proposal and to field any questions. To date, we have received over 40 letters of support, 19 out of the 26 towns in the region, including one from the Southbridge Conservation Commission. So far, the proposal has been approved by the Mass Forest Legacy Committee in October and is now under regional review by the Forest Service. So just to give you a little bit of a summary, the Forest Legacy Program is a partnership between participating states and the USDA Forest Service to identify and help protect environmentally important forests from conversion to non-forest uses. The main tool that they use for this conservation is through conservation easements in Massachusetts known as conservation restrictions. It's a non-regulatory program and it's strictly voluntary. The proposal that we put together is a document that a state compiles when applying to participate in the Forest Legacy Program. And in this document, we analyzed the need for the Forest Legacy Program. And so we're seeking to have a forest legacy area designated and that needs to happen before where each town or landowners are eligible to apply for forest legacy funding. And this is an area that's been identified in the state's assessment of need as containing important forests in need of protection. And just a little bit of background on conservation restrictions. These are legal contracts between willing landowners and land trusts or government agencies that limits future development by transferring some rights in its property, such as the right to construct new buildings for conservation purposes. And just a few points further about conservation restrictions is that the land continues to remain privately owned. CR language is specific and details the rights and prohibitions of the agreement. CRs are permanent and they stay with the land when it's sold or transferred. It's not an all or nothing proposal. The landowner can decide which parts of the property would be restricted. Some portion of the property value does remain on the tax rolls. And in the Forest Legacy Program, the CRs are held either by the state or by the municipality. The funding for the program covers up to 75% of the costs that are involved with putting land under conservation. And these include appraisals and land surveys, closing costs, baseline reports, title work, purchase of title insurance and other real estate transactions. And so this is a map of the proposed forest legacy area. It's an area 421,110 acres, includes 26 towns. Again, Southbridge is in there. Ecosystems in this region include watersheds for drinking water, rare and endangered wildlife and species habitat, working forest, recreational opportunities and scenic values. We feel that it addresses this threat of conversion to non-forest uses and would improve the chances for significant protection of a largely forested area that's at the next frontier of development as bedroom communities for Worcester, Springfield, Hartford and Boston. And so just one last bit about the Heritage Corridor area. It's a regionally significant forested area and is surrounded by areas that, where the Forest Legacy Program investment has already been made. And all the areas in brown are designated forest legacy areas. And the outline in red is the little hole we're trying to fulfill here in designating that as a forest legacy area. This would, as you can see, link important forest legacy areas. It would link regionally important forests and protected open spaces. And this area is unique because it bridges the gap between heavily forested northeastern Connecticut and the North Quabbin Region. Conservation of key corridors throughout this region are critical for wildlife, sustainable forest management, watershed protection and wildland recreation, all of which benefit from having large, unfragmented blocks of forest land. So that's what it would look like when it's designated. And this is a map that I included in my letter to the council. This is in yellow, the proposed forest legacy area with all of the towns that would be in that area. And with that, entertain any questions?
I have one. Are you just looking for portions of each of those towns? Do you keep property owners in each of those towns to partake so that there's sort of a connection? I mean.
Right, so the first hurdle is having the area designated as a forest legacy area and then working with land trusts and municipalities to strategically craft a project application that interested landowners, we would piece together a project. And it might be that project might end up being in Brookfields, in the Brookfields or maybe it's in Belcher Town or maybe it's in Southbridge and Stirbridge. But it would depend on who's interested in being involved in, I guess, strategically fielding that out over phases possibly. Thank you. Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if you could explain more about what a conservation restriction means for a landowner in Massachusetts? Like what land uses and what activities specifically would be restricted and what would still be okay to do with your land?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because I brought a handout that would help explain that some more. But really, conservation restrictions are a tool. They're a legal contract that landowners would work with their legal counsel and a land trust or municipality in working out all of the prohibitions and rights of the agreement. And they could say, you know, "I want this area of my property set aside because I might want to build a house and retire there." So then they can write that into the restriction as a building envelope or "I agree that all this 20 acres of woods in my backyard or whatever can just be conserved and under those rights, I'm not allowed to cut them" or whatever. Or "I like to log my, manage my forest land and I'd like to continue to do that." And that can be written in. So it's a very, it's case by case, each restriction and what the landowner is looking for.
So if somebody did own attractive forest land, say, and they still wanted to periodically go in and harvest trees just sustainably if they had, like I'd say, if they used like an FSC certified operator, that would still be okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's one of the aspects of the Forest Legacy Program that they look highly on project applications, that there is this continued use, this continued traditional forest use of the land.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Counsel Regis.
Madam Chair. One of your bullets there was regarding a portion of the property stays on the tax rolls. I owned a piece of property prior to moving back to Southbridge. A larger piece of property, 13 acres, I designated two acres of that property to build my home on. The rest of it was in something such as this. So I was charged a residential rate for my two acres that my house sat on and the rest of the 11 acres was essentially, it was like a dollar an acre that I paid. Is that something similar to this?
Right, so the value, because it's now put into conservation, its market value is different than if it was land that could be developed. So the value is less and so your taxes are less on that land. I'm not a tax accountant, but I know that, I had to look this up and I want to get it right. See if I understand this, this is from the state website about conservation restrictions and and maybe it's specific to the conservation restriction, but it's just saying that, you know, a portion of the property value will remain on local tax rolls and maybe that depends on if part of it is able to be developed. And maybe Howie from Opicum Land Trust, I don't mean to pick on him, but he might, he knows a lot about. knows a lot about conservation restrictions and might have a comment.
I do think that, just based upon my experience, that if you have a conservation restriction, that would basically treat it as raw land, which would have a decreased value. I think you have to formally go and achieve a sixty-one A, which is a state statute, obviously, that would entitle you to a decrease in the amount of taxes.
But you would still have to go through that process.
You'd have to go through that process even with a conservation restriction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to seven B, Department of Public Works, Mr. Daley.
Keep talking, he'll turn it off.
Hello? How's that? Much better? Good evening. Tom Daley, Director of Public Works. Glad to be here this evening. Department of Public Works, it's all in the name. And would like to dedicate this particular presentation to our friendly comrade, Mr. Richard Gargano. So the department has made up several divisions. The first one I want to talk about is the Operations Division of Public Works. And the picture is showing us one of the things we're called out to do a lot, which is just emergency response, whether it's weather-related or oil spills, et cetera. We get a lot of calls for emergency response. Also, the bread and butter of what we do in emergency response, of course, is snow and ice. During a typical sanding operation, we've got eight sanders to cover the town. And on a full snow plowing operation, we have thirty-three plows out, including two snow blowers, two staff of snow blowers that cover some of the town buildings. Street sweeping. We do the entire town annually, plus we patrol sweep through just about the entire season. Last year, we generated and disposed of about twelve-hundred-and-seventy tons of street sweeping. Traffic control, from the installation of new to the maintenance of, you know, existing regulatory signs, street signs, and of course, traffic signals. You know, if lights go out, et cetera, timing issues, we'll respond ourselves. If it gets too complicated, we will bring in a contractor. Downtown streetlights, we're about ninety lights downtown that we maintain. Street patching. Last year, typically, we put out about two-hundred-and-sixty tons a year of street patch, asphalt hot patch. Sidewalk repairs, drainage repairs. Ballfield maintenance. We maintain about thirty-plus or minus acres. That includes weekly in-season, this is weekly mowing, litter pickup, fence repair, dragging the fields weekly, and also the maintenance of floor irrigation systems. Cemetery maintenance and burials. We maintain oak ridges about thirty-six, approximately acres. That's, again, weekly mowing, weed whacking, around five-thousand grave markers, stone repair, tree maintenance, et cetera. Parks, parcels, islands maintenance. We have thirty-five different locations around the community that we maintain. Again, weekly mowing, litter patrol, miscellaneous maintenance as needed. We are involved in holiday lighting every year that goes on around town. Roadside mowing. We have about seventy different locations that we mow annually. Building maintenance. We have eleven buildings that we take care of, from replacing a porch roof here to painting an office, just about anything and everything you can imagine to do with any one of the eleven buildings we maintain, we're involved with, or called upon, you know. If it gets heavy duty plumbing, electrical, of course, we bring in the licensed professionals. Custodial services. We have four buildings that we supply custodial services to. We have two full-time custodians. One takes care of the library, the town hall, and one at the town hall. And then we have a contractor at one-fifteen Massey Street, and a part-time contractor comes down weekly at DPW Garage. Leaf removal. Last year, we picked up about two-hundred-and-seventy tons of leaves, which is about fifty truckloads annually. And that is a nineteen-sixty-eight Chevy still in the fleet. Vehicle maintenance. We have a hundred-and-two pieces of equipment, trucks, equipment that we maintain, that's not counting small equipment. So not mowers, weed whackers, not snow blowers, just, you know, trucks and heavy equipment. We have three mechanics to do that work. We also heat a portion of the garage with a waste oil burner. So all the oil, transmission fluid, et cetera, that, you know, we change out in the vehicles, we do burn and heat a portion of the DPW facility. Catch basin cleaning. Twenty-four hundred catch basins approximately in the town are cleaned every year. Last year, we generated seven-hundred-and-thirty-four tons of catch basin cleanings. Catch basin repair. We repair approximately about fifty or so catch basins a year. Tree regulation. I am the tree warden, so we deal quite a bit with the utility companies, National Grid, Verizon, regarding, you know, tree maintenance they want to do, taking down street trees. We have to post hearings and have public shade tree hearings for these trees, so keeps us busy. There's scheduled tree removal. Actually, you'll see one of my guys right there. There's scheduled tree removal, and then, of course, there's the unscheduled tree removal, you know, from bad weather, et cetera. It's just something that comes down. Burn, curb repairs. God reel maintenance. Easement maintenance. You know, we have a number of water and sewer easements that run through the woods through the community, and we have to go in there from time to time and maintain them so that we can still gain access in case of an emergency water main break or sewer block, et cetera, in the main. Pavement markings annually. And of course, the occasional roadkill removal. Christmas tree collection and recycling. Last year, we picked up five-hundred-and-eighteen Christmas trees, chipped them, and we reuse them on the town properties as mulch, et cetera. We also get involved in all kinds of different special projects. For example, the compost facility that we constructed last year down the DPW garage, so residents can drop off their leaf and brush waste. This last two years, Department of Public Works constructed seventy-five-hundred feet of rail trail. And that includes, of course, the construction of two bridges. This is the first bridge. This is a before picture. The design was done primarily in-house. And then we got in-house construction, and we scrounge up anyone we can to help on the And there's the final product. That was completed, I think, June this last year. Second bridge, we started, really started construction on a few weeks ago. It's not a very good picture. It's about a twelve-foot span, a much smaller bridge. Again, it was primarily an in-house design. Even got our engineer out there to pull out some leveling pads before the girders were placed. And then into the rest of the construction, getting a little cold this time of year. And we wrapped it up, actually, last week. The department went out and built the ramps, did a nice job to it. So we have a complete rail trail now, seventy-five-hundred feet from the Golden Greek Restaurant all the way to the W line. So that portion is complete at this point. Miscellaneous repairs, anything you can even think of. You know, a railing that's broken somewhere, a bridge rail somewhere, we'll be helping fix it. So all that work I just showed you, other than the custodians and mechanics, all that work is performed by eleven employees who have, you know, vacation time, sick time, et cetera. Like, right now, we've got eight guys in, that's it, each day. On top of that, you know, managed by one working foreman and one operations manager, who, you know, do get their hands dirty also. Well, annually, we do road rehabilitation work. This is our road, this is actually Lebanon Hill getting reclaimed last year. And then the paving of that work. We have about ninety-three miles of public way that we maintain throughout the community. In-house for roadwork. In-house design, we'll design it, survey it, we'll design it, we'll bid it, and we'll supervise the construction. So that's just a sample. This is what you're looking at is the Tory Road design that'll be coming before you probably in January for approval, award and approval. It'll hit construction in a second. Regulatory review. We have a number of, number of different type of items that might come in, sewer connections, we'll assist the planning board, consult with them on subdivision, submittals, et cetera. Permitting. Street opening permits come through the department, driveway permits, water connections, sewer connections. We assist with parking regulations. About a hundred-and-seventy permits, et cetera, come through the office annually. We have a geographic information system, the town has. We use it quite a bit. We have a water layer, shows our water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, drainage, ortho photos. We assist with updating information from time to time, and we use it for research and also for preliminary design of projects. We do expert witness work, work hand-in-hand with the police department. We need to certify distances for, say, sexual offenders who live too close to schools or drug deals going on too close to schools. So the police department relies on us to certify the distances. Stormwater quality. We're involved, you know, we have a national pollution discharge elimination system permit, like a lot of communities. We have to do annual reports on our progress on cleaning up our stormwater. Fuel monitoring. Weekly, we download and monitor fuel consumption. Every time a vehicle is filled up, we know what vehicle, what employee, how much fuel, what type of fuel, what date, what time, et cetera. Weekly, we do a report. We also monitor the fuel level in our tanks. And every week, we generate a report, and at the end of the month, we'll put out a monthly billing to each department. We're involved with Mass DOT-funded projects, like the one-sixty-nine job, you know, large projects funded through the TIP program. We'll work on the project with them through conception, preliminary design, and then assist from time to time on the construction phase as needed, kind of as a go-between with the residents and the council, you know, the town and the state, basically. Feasibility planning for any specific project that might happen. For example, a little feasibility work for a potential solar project. We're involved, Mr. Clark, in the tech park development. The lots we just sold, you know, they actually started out on our AutoCAD system, you know, conceptual plans, so that we can market the lots. Street acceptance, involved heavily in that process. What you're looking at is the commercial drive acceptance plan, CAD version. We work with the community development department on CBG-funded projects. We're involved in the design and help manage those projects with them. We submit for grants, and we help implement those projects. We have this tree grant, as you remember this last year that happened, and we have another one coming up for this year, a fifty-thousand-dollar grant. We're involved and have a seat on the traffic commission. Of course, let's not forget beavers. There's a beaver issue in town, you know, primarily that might affect the public way. We get called out and assisted with beaver control. Another division of Public Works is the sewer division. As you know, we have sewers contracted out, and Violia Water runs our sewer division. There's a couple pieces to this. First is the collection system, so collection maintenance. We have forty-seven miles of sewer main, about twelve-hundred manholes. We do TV inspections annually. That's our TV truck. Four and a half miles per year are TVed. We also have a main flushing program, nine miles of sewer main are flushed each year. INI investigation, inflow and infiltration, big problem, not just for us, but regionally, statewide, throughout the country with our aging infrastructure. What you're looking at is crystal-clean groundwater in a manhole, sewer manhole. It's a lot of water that we should not be treating. We have lift station repairs and maintenance. We have nine lift stations in all in town. Generated maintenance that goes along with that, and at the wastewater plant. And there's the wastewater plant. Operations and maintenance. All right, where do we begin with this one? About a billion gallons of sewage goes through the plant in a year. We have to maintain the pumps and equipment in the plant. We have to do a lot of, you know, we have a lab down there to do process analysis, chemical analysis and injection systems. A lot of environmental reporting, as you can imagine. Compost processing. Typically, I think last year, thirty-eight dry tons of sludge was converted into six-thousand cubic yards of compost. It's kind of funny, the contractual arrangement, but basically, it's taken care of us by Violia, and then they get some of the profit. They're not making any money, so it's not a big win. We also take reclaimed water from the wastewater plant, basically gray water, and we pump it up to millennium. Town generates revenue from that. And last year, they took about a hundred-and-seventy-six million gallons of water that they use in their cooling system. The water division of Public Works. It's Violia Water runs our wastewater division, Whitewater runs our water division. That particular picture actually is our backhoe with the hammer. That particular picture is knocking out some ledge a month or two ago up the airport water main project. We were able to knock it out with the hammer as opposed to having to hire a blaster to come in and remove the ledge for us. So we were able to do that in-house. Not all the ledge. We're going to bring the blaster for some, but there was a stretch that we were able to do in-house. First is distribution maintenance. Hydrant repairs and maintenance. We have about six-hundred-and-fifty-six hydrants in town to take care of. We do hydrant exercising three times a year, when you consider twice hydrant flushing and then doing a wet inspection, which is basically, we inspect them this time of year. If they don't drain properly, we put antifreeze in the hydrant so it doesn't freeze. Hydrant flushing twice a year. Valve repairs and maintenance. We have twenty-eight-hundred valves in town to take care of. We exercise about a third of those valves annually. Main repairs. We're at a hundred miles of water main in town to take care of. A lot of times, we'll, you know, as a, as a process to maintain those water mains, we'll clean and align them. And what sometimes, we actually do new main installation, what we're doing right now at the airport, to get water up to the airport itself. And that's being done in-house by Whitewater. Backfall testing. Three-hundred-and-twenty devices are tested twice a year. Remote meter reading and maintenance. About forty-four-hundred meters have been replaced. We're complete with that project, and we have to read them quarterly and maintain them. Tank inspection and maintenance. Four tanks every day is inspected, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Pump station maintenance. Six stations, again, every day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Involved a lot of master planning. We just completed a model for the system, looking at our future needs. Reservoirs and treatment. We have five reservoirs in town that we have to maintain, the entire watershed. We have about a billion gallons of water, plus or minus, in storage. Have to do dam inspection and maintenance, chemical analysis in the plant, chemical injection, plant systems maintenance. And this last year, Southbridge Water Department received an award citation by the governor. I can read this, "In recognition of your dedicated service to maintaining a safe and abundant supply of clean water, in appreciation of your commitment to protecting this valuable natural resource." Very nice award. And there's our water crew who made that happen. Last but not least, I'm done. Administration. Customer service, billing, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, budget control, cemetery administration, utility abasements, contract administration. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Moving on to agenda item number eight, citizens' forum. Are there any citizens who would like to speak tonight? Please approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Seven-seven-one, eleven-and-a-half. I just wanted to suggest a New Year's resolution to all the town councilors and to everyone, since this is the last meeting before the new year. To use a reusable cup for water or any beverage to replace all the disposable cups of plastic, styrofoam, or paper. Plastic is everywhere. It can be useful, but is also a source of air, water, and soil pollution, as well as a potential hazard to the user. So I looked at the disposable plastic cups. Oh, I forgot my prop. The ones over there at the water cooler, and they're number five. So I had some of the cups over there, but I forgot them to bring them up. Okay, so number five, plastic, is also known as polypropylene, which is more of a durable plastic. It is often used for containers for hot liquid, car interior trim, car bumpers, and industrial fibers. So I picked up the cups that I have over there after the last town council meeting on the dais. on the dais, so people can't say, "Oh, I was going to recycle them," because they were obviously left there, so the user did not intend to put them in the recycle bin, and the disposable cups most likely would have ended up in the trash, and eventually in the landfill. So, when people complain about the landfill, or whatever, they should think about what they contribute to it. So each plastic item has a number, one to seven, and these are not universal numbers, these numbers are only found in the USA, just as a point of information. The most popular number, when you look at the number on the bottom, is number one. When it is recycled, it can be turned into polar fleece, fiber, tote bags, furniture, carpets, paneling, straps, and sometimes new containers. Number three, six, and seven plastics can be the most hazardous due to the leaching potential. That water container over there is number seven, as are most three to five gallon containers. So as role models to this audience and to the TV watching audience, I encourage you all to bring a reusable cup or mug with your beverage, it can be glass, metal, travel mug, whatever. I know this won't solve the earth's plastic woes, but it can help and be healthier to you. If you want to know more about the coating of plastic, I got my information from Wikipedia and wwwthedailygreen.com. So thanks, happy solstice and New Year, and resolve not to use disposable products in 2013. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. I would like to ask, actually, the town manager, one day I went to throw my cup away, plastic cup in the recycle bin that used to be over here, and there was only the paper one, so, I mean, I know where one said there's just the slot, so you got to, we used to have another container next to it, too, for other items, is that something we could potentially do again?
Yeah, we can look at it.
Because it was just the slot, so.
Just the custodian that does the building actually is really conscientious about recycling, so I'm sure if cups are left here, he does put them in the recycling bins downstairs, so we do recycle as an organization.
Super, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak before council?
Good evening, Kevin Buxton, 255 Elm Street. In watching the last council meeting, I couldn't help but see some anguish and frustration on the council concerning budget issues. I realize it's not a subject I normally talk about, but I felt compelled that, I wasn't here at the May meeting, the December meeting seemed to show, like I said, frustration of the councilors. One of the frustrations the council faces is, once the horse is out of the barn, it's kind of hard to get it back in, and I realize that, you know, the May meeting posed some ability for the council to give direction towards the 2013 budget. The December, the last meeting, did not. When it comes to increases in the budget, in 2000, late in 2008, after the presidential election, the US Fed announced that, well, the US economy had been in a recession since June of 2007. Now, we can't expect knee-jerk reactions, so we, in no way could have expected a proactive effort by the council or the town manager to look at the 2009 budget and try to realize that maybe we need to slow our growth. Let me correct that, slow the growth of the municipal budget. If we give the Fed 18 months to realize that, or to report a recession, maybe we could have extended 18 months to try to get ahead of the economy issues that everybody's been facing in town. The point I'm trying to make is, we strive to gain as much growth in commercial and industrial manufacturing, but I think the one area that the council seems to acknowledge is the fact that, as residential taxes go up, it hurts the smallest percentage of the residents, those on fixed income. Fixed income is, receives cost of living increases, it's just that we don't negotiate budgets or anything solely based on the cost of living for fixed income. We look at it as, nobody likes, nobody likes a pessimist to say, "Well, jeez, you know, we have to cut back, cut back, cut back." So everybody wishes to be optimistic and say, "You know what, this budget may have increased year after year, but we always anticipate better things are coming." Well, I think we've gone now since 2009, here we are in 2012, and the chart that Will Canoria showed us, that ever-climbing increase in the average state taxes and the average town taxes, is a line that is easily associated with the ever-growing economy. I think at this point, we need to look back at our economy and say, the idea of the ever-growing economy is unsustainable. Short of trying to anticipate the taxes generated by every birth at Harrington Hospital, every child that's born, if we figure the tax levy is $16 million, if we spread that out over every man, woman, and child, it's close to probably over $1,000 for every man, woman, and child, so even if we were to take every birth at Harrington Hospital that writes down as a resident, it's an unrealistic growth. We need to sooner or later get a handle on our ever-growing tax levy. We have this paradox of, well, if we don't tax to the maximum limit, then the state will reduce its funding. Two out of every three dollars spent in this town comes from that state funding.
Mr. Buxton? Sorry, would you like three more minutes?
Yes.
Second, poll a favor? Continue, sorry.
I'll get to the point. We're going into January, and I think it's time for this council not to put a hold on all budget increases, but to at very least say, "We're going to slow down on this ever-expanding tax levy." The economy, and not only the country, but this town, has gone through now five years, where we stay ever hopeful that things will get better, but it's not. And as I say, you're, you might only feel the pain if you're in that lower fixed income, but I think we need to realize that the pain is accumulating and accumulating, and if we continue to go from 56 million, what will it be next year? And we continue to add pain on top of pain, I think we need to, in January, please, as councilors, come together and try to at least freeze the residential tax levy for the good of your community. Other than that, I'd like to emphasize that the Sustainability Committee is looking for two more members, and I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. Is there anyone else who wants to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Lauren McLaughlin, 71 Park Avenue in Southbridge. I'm here tonight to invite the Southbridge community to a candlelight vigil for peace in honor of Sandy Hook Elementary School. This vigil will take place on Wednesday evening at McMahon Field. Candles will be distributed at 5:45, and the service will begin promptly at 6:00. The purpose of this vigil is to gather together as a community, to collectively comfort one another, especially, I think, our children, and to show support for our neighbors in Newtown, Connecticut. The program will include prayer, speakers, and music. Councilor Moriarty, I believe, will describe more details of the event to you later during councilor's forum, but I'm here to describe one particular aspect of the event that has kind of grown, and one that can involve all residents, whether they decide to participate Wednesday night and come to the vigil, or are unable to do so, and this is the idea of a peace tree. Those who attend the vigil on Wednesday evening will have the opportunity at that time to write messages of condolence, or wishes for peace on a paper dove, on paper dove and star-shaped ornaments. These ornaments will be placed on peace trees during the service, but will later be collected and sent soon thereafter to Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut, as a gesture of friendship and goodwill from our community to theirs. If members of the community are unable to attend the candlelight vigil on Wednesday, but are interested in participating in this peace ornament project, paper dove and star ornaments will be available at various sites throughout town, beginning Wednesday morning. We're hoping to make them available at the town hall, the Y, the senior center, the library, the high-rise in Dresser Park Apartments, the nursing home, the hospital. Anybody who would like to receive a set of these ornaments is welcome to make that request. And we, what we'd ask is that you'd simply take a blank ornament and add your sentiment to it, and then place the ornament in a large Ziploc bag that will be available at each location with the instructions kind of attached to it. These bags will be collected on Friday, December 21st, and will be included to our shipment to Newtown, Connecticut, the following week. I thank you very much for your time, Councilor Moriarty, and I hope you will be able to join us Wednesday evening at McMahon Field if your schedule allows. The ornaments, just so you know, kind of look like this. Somebody on Facebook designed them, somebody who heard about the vigil on Facebook designed them, they say in honor of Sandy Hook Elementary, they're going to be cut out on heavy-duty cardstock, and people who attend the vigil, like I said, or people who just want to create an ornament, please do that, that would be wonderful. Also, I just want to mention that I am a member of the Southbridge School Committee, and I just wanted to let everybody know that today, Mr. Wiggins sent home, to all parents and guardians, a very well-written letter to express the school's sadness, the school department's sadness and shock over the events that transpired last Friday, and to let parents know what the school district is doing in terms of security and safety for their children, and also to give reassurances that our schools are safe, that they are, that drills are done regularly. I remember when my daughters were in first grade, the first time they had a lockdown drill, I actually kind of freaked out a little bit, said, "What are you doing to all these kids in first grade?" And here we are now, I want to apologize to Mrs. Subordi for questioning, you know, what was happening at the time. But also, Mr. Wiggins included some talking points to talk to children about violence. I just wanted to let the public know, since I don't believe there's going to be a televised school committee meeting before the end of the year, about, that that action has been taken. That's it. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we're going to move on with the agenda item. Agenda item number nine, vote to amend parking regulation pursuant to permit number P-000141 for street parking in the area of Charlton Street School and the intersection of Gulfwood Road in accordance with Chapter 85, Section 2 of the general laws.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The very question, I always says in the vicinity of Charlton Street School, but 250 feet is actually quite, quite a good distance, and the area that is going to be designated as no parking is in an area that is multifamily dwellings, that, to me, doesn't have, there are residents that don't have much parking space in the terms of driveway, et cetera. So we're going to be creating a greater problem for these people, and also inadvertently for ourselves, because they're going to have to find an alternate place from where they're parking now, so I, I'm concerned about that, because I know, I live in a multifamily dwelling right now in Elm Street, and if this was to be visited in our area, this could cause a problem, so, I mean, that street is wide enough, I would not be in favor of that big of a no parking area based on that.
Just to, actually, that's a great observation, the original request was going to go much further, and we sent out an invitation to each of the residents in that area to talk about that exact issue, and the reason why we did not go further is, as you look at your map, you'll see there's three homes, those folks actually had a significant parking issue, and the other residents did not respond, and as you can see on the map, you can see that they have driveways, so they have the ability to get off the street. So we did take that into account in the consideration that was presented to the PPP Subcommittee.
Thank you, so just a, the people who, because I did notice in the minutes about the citizens that did attend, and that was the bulk of what their concerns were? Thank you very much.
Councilor Vandal? Anyone else? Okay, roll call please.
Councilor Landraven?
Yes.
Councilor McCucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pelican?
Yes.
Councilor Regis?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Clemmons?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda item number 10, vote to transfer funds in the amount of $14,510 from Town Council Reserve account to the Police Department Capital Account to replace cruiser number 220 involved in an accident on September 15th, 2012, and considered a total loss.
So moved.
Discussion. Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, just a comment, I believe that this is the cruiser that was involved with another cruiser from another police agency, and I think it's important that people know this was not the fault of the officers, they were responding to a call, and, so, that's all, I just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Yeah, we're just trying to replace one vehicle that, as the counselor pointed out, was involved in an accident with a state law enforcement vehicle, so all we're trying to do is replace a vehicle that needs to be replaced, because it was damaged.
And then, Chair, I just want to point out, I'm just grateful that nobody was hurt, seriously, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Moriarty?
I just wanted to note, unless I misremember here, the actual accident was October 15th, wasn't it, it was around close to, or was it something, just, it's not a big deal either way, but.
I think it was in October, we actually have in the memo, it was September 15th, but I believe it was October.
Yes, correct.
And then, the other note is just, obviously, there's a decent portion of this would be paid through reimbursement from our own insurance company. I know at Subcommittee level, there was discuss, discussion as far as trying to get the state police to pay their fair share, has there been any movement on that? We didn't seem terribly optimistic, but.
Yeah, I think the insurance company is in negotiations with the state police, and so far, they haven't reported back favorably in terms of what they've come up with. I think it is important to note that they gave us the actual cash value, because this was a slightly older vehicle, we get actual cash value, and I believe the insurance company was going to pay, or have paid, our portion of the deductible, so I think the insurance company has kind of acknowledged, it's not our fault, but what they're able to work out with the state police is yet to be determined.
And then, just lastly, through you to the chief, because this was an older vehicle, how, how long do you figure before this vehicle would have been put out to pasture?
Hard to say, I mean, it had approximately 83,000 miles on it, a lot of times, at that point, we kind of make it like, I'd say, a court car or something like that, so we can get three, sometimes four more years out of it, a lot less miles per year, but we get a few more years, but.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Pelican?
So this, the new one that we have the quote for, that's a 2011 model?
That's correct.
Okay, so are we going to buy another two new ones in the budget for next year, or is?
This is a replacement of, of one of the existing fleet, so we're just replacing that, of the existing fleet, and I believe we would keep, continue with the cycle of doing the two vehicles per year, that, that would not change as a result of this.
Okay, thank you. I'd point out, that'd be requesting two, two a year.
Correct.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilor McCucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 11, vote to appropriate the sum of $7,870.50 from Certified Free Cash for an unpaid prior-year bill to be reimbursed to Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish LLP. This requires a two-thirds vote.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call.
Council McDonald?
No.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
No.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
Yes.
Council Mikuichi?
Yes.
Six yes, two no?
Motion passes. Agenda item number 12, vote to extend the contract with Green Brown Consultant for another six months through June 30th, 2013, to continue service under the original contract and to allocate $18,000 to extend an amendment contract through FY 2013. Vote to further expand $22,000 to continue police enforcement efforts, $14,000 for education and advertising for other efforts relating to recycling efforts for FY 2013.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Council Moriarty.
I just think it's important to note, one of my main issues with this was, was brought up at, I brought it up at Subcommittee, was more or less kind of the money going towards the Police Department and that sort of thing, as far as, I believe, from what the Health Director had said, it's two to three a month now is what we're really looking at for the trash violations. However, one of the big parts that was brought up was also that they don't, the police officers are not just doing that, they're doing the other illegal dumpings and that sort of thing. So that puts me with a little bit more ease on that. Just want to kind of note that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Maybe, Madam Chair, just to provide a little bit of overview. We actually, as part of the budget process, included in the budget a $72,000 worth of revenue, but we do need to do the, the second part of that, which is to lay out the funding formula. Under this proposal, it's $18,000 for Green Brown to conclude the existing contract, $18,000 to extend for the additional six months, which will bring us through to June 30th, and then to fund at the levels that we had previously indicated, the $22,000 for law enforcement, and then $14,000 for education and advertising. We did publicly, the Health Director and myself, during the presentations, on this proposal, did talk about that we hope to, one, transition this into looking at trying to do the trash containers for, for folks and have an automated system for picking up trash. So we do see this as kind of the, the final transition of the Green Brown Consulting contract, and we just need time to put the new program together for July 1st, 2013. So this is kind of transitional in item, and then when we have the final details, we will bring that back. I know the Health Director put together a presentation that was submitted in the, in the materials, so people get a sense for where we're headed with this. But we do need to kind of conclude this year's spending in regards to these contracts that have been put in place. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Buxton.
Yes, in the past, the funding source for this money, the $72,000, I've emphasized is, comes from the operator of the landfill specifically in an account for recycle rewards. It wasn't much. It was a side letter by interim town manager Jack Healy with the operator in 2007 that established the recycle, some recycle reward program. It was the operator's intention that Recycle Bank was that. Once Recycle Bank, once the operator chose no longer to participate with the Recycle Bank, that $72,000 did not just go back into the revenue either through royalties or other revenue. It was specified as $72,000. $1 per household, per month, that's all it is for 6,000 households, thus $72,000. I realize it's not tax money and it's easily spent, but I still urge the council that this money was set aside, granted by an interim town manager, which if we want to justify him as a transient and his efforts and actions no longer require respect, then we can spend this money however we see fit. I continue to emphasize that, yes, the town recycling program is doing well, but sooner or later, this money needs to find its way back to where it was supposed to go, and that was to the residents for their good efforts in recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. Anyone else? Council Landman first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This program has been absolutely working in the best interests of the community in moving forward, and we have seen great improvements with our recycling and stuff like that. My only holdup on this whole thing is, and again, I understand, it's, the $22,000 is not for an additional police officer, it's help to control and enforce, but I just have a hard time voting for that piece of it. So although I do believe that we are heading in the right direction, and I understand in six months, we're going to be going in a different direction, tonight I will just be voting no solely on that purpose. Other than that, I think they're doing a tremendous job. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council Pellican.
I, I had a couple of concerns. I know that the first time this came before the council since my becoming a member of the body, I expressed concerns about this sort of not totally complying with Massachusetts' employment law in terms of how you define independent contractor versus somebody who's an employee. But in looking at the paperwork, and I apologize, I didn't realize that the, for this agenda item, it only has the presentation from Mr. Moore and not the actual contract itself. But in looking at the insurance documentation, I wasn't sure that it actually, I'm not totally sure that they have all of the insurance that's required by the contract. And I'll go back and look at that again, because in looking at it, I know that the policy that was attached to it was the previous year's policy, not the current year, but there were a couple of things on it that I wasn't sure about that. But I can, I can follow up with that later on.
Okay.
But thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I personally would like to see us make sure there's something in place before we, if we decide to change this. I would like to support this to finish the six months out so that people don't think that we can just stop what all the, all the forward movement we've made, all the progress we've made on this particular portion of our trash situation, so... Seeing nobody else? Roll call, please.
Moriarty? I'm sorry, Council Moriarty.
Abstain.
Council Pellican?
Abstain.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
No.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
No.
Council Mikuichi?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
No.
We got three yes, three no, two abstains.
Three yes, two no.
Three yes, three no, two abstains.
So motion passes.
Oh, Madam, put a vote on Madam Chair. The motion fails. A tie.
Three yes, three nos?
Three yes.
Three no.
Two no?
Three yes, three no.
Oh, three no. I'm sorry. I misheard.
Okay. Motion fails. Okay, agenda item 13, vote to ratify, ratify change order number 11 in the amount of $79,934 to incorporate change requests submitted by Consigli construction as approved by Jocelyn Lesser.
So moved.
Any discussion? Is this the end of change orders? Do you see any, do you foresee any other change orders?
There'd probably be maybe one or two more, but they should be fairly minimal, and this is all within the, the budgeted amounts allocated for the project.
Having excess at the end of a project is not a bad thing, so, thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
Yes.
Council Mikuichi?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda item 14, vote to ratify the contract between the town of Southbridge and Holland Chemical pursuant to MGL Chapter 30B in an amount not to exceed $24,000 to perform all work and furnish all services necessary to furnish the town with goods as listed, commercial-grade bulk aluminum solution for FY 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Council Regis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was discussion in the Subcommittee meeting regarding quotes. I see the contract here, but the quotes aren't attached. Just wondering if there was follow-up between yourself and the DPW Director and if those were provided to you as the...
Yes, there was, and yes, we have the quotes in the office.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
Yes.
Council Mikuichi?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda item 15, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and H.R. Prescott &amp; Sons, Inc. in the amount of $135,000 annually for water supply materials with an option to extend contract for two additional years with a 12% increase for FY 2014 and an 8% increase in FY 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Council McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager. I have three questions that kind of stem from this. My first question would be, I'm assuming because of the amount, that there was an RFP that was put forward for this particular...
Invitation for bid.
Okay, invitation to bid. So in, in saying that, I'm concerned about the original price and then the increase of 12% and then 8% over the next two years, should the project extend. I guess I have two parts to this next question. Why so much, and was that part of the initial bid that others had an opportunity to bid on, or is that something we arrived at during the negotiation phase of this particular contract?
No, that was part of the original bid, and in terms of, this is kind of a specialty area, so I've been told that this is not out of the range of normal for what percentage increases are. I would say that what we, what administration will do, and DPW administration in particular, is this is done at the sole option of the town. So if the town goes out and kind of tests out to see what the price in the market is, then we can actually go out to bid again if we think that that 12% is too high. So we do have some flexibility, but if it goes higher than 12%, then we have the flexibility of having a locked-in rate, too.
Great. Thank you. And the last part of that question would be, how will this, if at all, affect the rates to the ratepayers once the work is complete?
It won't, it shouldn't have. This is built into the budget. All these items are built into the, the budget.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
Yes.
Council Mikuichi?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda item 16, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Worldwide Industries Corporation in the amount of $347,000 to provide $53,000 for contingencies and to appropriate funding from retained earnings in the amount of $400,000 to paint and seal the tank, add cathodic protection to the tank, and install a mixing system to address icing, interior, interior tank damage fire protection, and water quality issues inside the Dennison Hill Water Tank.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. I'm just, after looking through and they were looking at the, looking through the contract and the information from the engineer, I'm just, one question. Are we confident that the root of the problem has been identified? I'm not sure who. Mr. Daley?
I'll defer to Mr. Daley.
Since he's still here.
Apologize, I had a little trouble hearing you. Who's the question was, have we identified the root of the problem?
Are we confident that we've identified the problem? The root of the problem?
We are confident, for any of those who want to wear, this particular, particular tank has had some issues with the coating, basically peeling, it's rusting. It's been problematic with the tank since the late 90s, even though some work was done to repair it. I think by the original contractor came back and did some additional work. The root of the, one of the issues is, we don't know what the root of the exact problem was. I mean, it could have been the original coatings, the way they were applied, maybe some of the treatment to the steel before it was originally applied. But what we're doing is, is a little belts and suspenders with this. You know, we are stripping this tank right down to bare metal and then bringing it all back up. The other thing we're doing, we're adding cathodic protection to it to deal with straight currents. Straight currents can cause it, you know, a metal structure to prematurely rust. So we're kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So have we found the root of the problem? I'd say no, but I feel extremely confident with the approach we're taking so that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Landman?
Yes.
Council Mikuichi?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. And now we move on to councilor's forum. Agenda item 17, we'll start with Council Moriarty.
Okay. I have a few different things, a couple of them are quick plugs. One of them, January 26th, which happens to coincide with the, the big conference on the municipal side, there's a chili cook-off in Minute to Win at Trivia Night, excuse me, that's benefiting the Relay for Life. So that's Saturday, the 26th, at the Knights of Columbus. $5 at the door, and an additional five, they're entering a chili. There's prizes for the best chilies and trivia game teams, and getting that benefits. That all benefits Relay for Life, fighting cancer. There's prizes for the best chilies and trivia game teams, and again, that all benefits, Relay for Life and Fighting Cancer. Through you to the Town Manager. One of the, local resident had contacted me, they were upset that they had received some FEMA money from the tornado, and apparently now FEMA has sent a letter to them citing that they were overpaid basically for the full amount, and that they're demanding that that money be repaid in full, pretty much immediately. I know he had approached your, your office as well, and I know obviously you've got no real jurisdiction as far as FEMA goes. But, any sort of information you may have, that would be great, or even if there are other residents that I'm sure have had the same situation, whether it's, again, I'm sure Representative Durant isn't going to be able to make a whole lot of noise for FEMA, but at some point, someone down that line, whether it's outgoing Senator Brown, or somebody else, potentially outgoing Senator Kerry, whoever. Is there any information you have on that?
Yeah, I think as, as you pointed out, it's really a federal matter. The one thing, I did have an individual approach me, and one of the things that we need to look at is administration, that we have a couple of sources of funding that the town has received. Obviously, the drainage work up on, up on Charlton Street. Also, we have some rail, guard rail up on Pleasant Street. But we did receive some donations that came in and was given to the town in the form of a trust. So we need to look at those funds that were given and to see how those funds may be able to be dispersed. They may be able to be done as individual consideration to residents that are still struggling or still in need. So we will look at that. We'll probably organize a meeting first, you know, beginning of the new, beginning of new calendar year, and see what we can do in terms of, if there's means to kind of cover some of those costs.
Okay, but in the meantime, obviously, my recollection from the conversation was that the first of the new year would be after what FEMA is looking for, for their deadline, if I recall correctly. I may, I may be incorrect. So more or less, the individuals would have to still pay that amount or risk whatever FEMA may try to do, and then potentially, the town would...
Through you, Madam Chair. I mean, if they have, if the individuals have a contract with FEMA, then they need to go through that contract with FEMA and see. Representative Neil would also be someone as a resource for people to, to go to, certainly at the federal level. That's kind of the more appropriate avenue for them to pursue.
Okay, thank you. And then also, similar to what School Committee McLaughlin had brought up earlier, there will be that candlelight vigil plan for this upcoming Wednesday, the 19th, at McMahon Field. We're asking people to arrive around 5:45. That's when they'll get their candles and such and gather. Plans are for things to begin at 6 o'clock. Various church groups, rather various churches and parishes have been contacted, and there will be a number of, of local religious leaders that will be on hand to speak and, and offer their, their words of wisdom, as well as, in their roles, the police chief and the acting superintendent of schools will be on hand for some quick remarks. We have a few local talented singers that'll be on hand. Heather Peculet, Gary Peck, and Caitlin Peck will be performing briefly. Yankee Candle has donated 300 or so candles that'll be used for the vigil. There's a fabric store, I believe it's formerly called that $1.99 Fabric Store, something to that effect, in Auburn. They're donating material for about 500 ribbons. Lauren kind of outlined a lot about the peace tree. And there will also be some folks collecting donations for those who are so inclined, and that money would be sent out to the people of Newtown for them to use for, whether it's a memorial, whatever they see fit, as they go through that process. And, and then just lastly, I just wanted to, since this is our last meeting before the holiday, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Council McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like everyone else, I was taken aback and stunned by the events that have happened recently, and there's nothing, you know, that anybody, I could add to that. But this is a special time of year, and I would say that, I've heard it once said that the most assured way for evil to succeed in the world is for good people to do nothing. So I just ask all of us to endeavor to do good. I want to wish all the citizens of Southbridge, the town employees, my fellow counselors, the Town Manager, a very Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to those who celebrate other holidays and have a happy and prosperous New Year, and may we all be able to find some peace, although we may not make sense out of what's happened. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council Vandal?
I don't know if anybody knows, but the Edwards Block parking in the back is chock full. Every night you go by there, there's hardly a place left. There's a deal that was made with the, with Old Robbins Building, when they rehabilitated it, they said that they were going to park in the Notre Dame parking lot up there on Main Street. That's not happening. You go by Notre Dame parking lot that night and it's completely empty. So I think maybe at one time, pretty soon, maybe we ought to set a rate so that they can pay rent for the parking places in the Edwards Block, and that's one. Number two is the trash barrels downtown. I noticed on Friday, I noticed this past Friday, and many other Fridays, and I've complained about it before, that they're full, they're over, they're going over the brim. So they gotta be, they have to be picked up more often, okay? And then there was something else, let's see, trash barrel? That's it, thank you. Oh, I gotta read my article here, that's what it was. In this morning's Telegram and Gazette editor, the People's Forum, a Southbridge man wrote, "Southbridge landfill is a problem. Thank you for bringing awareness to the plight of the Blackstone River in your series, the cost of, the cost of clean paying for the Blackstone. A serious problem is also occurring in central Massachusetts. For the past year, there have been disturbing groundwater sampling reports at the Southbridge landfill, showing high contamination levels in surrounding wells. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection was concerned enough about this problem to direct further independent study. On November 16th, the DEP report prepared by Ty and Born was received. It appears to me, the main finding in the report is that the landfill is pushing out too much arsenic, chromium, and lead into the wetlands east and west of the site. Also, one startling thing in the report is the contaminants are flowing from the wetlands to surface water creeks and rivers nearby. But even the independent auditor admitted, the fate of the metals is not known once they discharge into service water. Although it turns out arsenic is naturally occurring at the site, the site activity and infrastructure are dissolving the arsenic and adding it to other flowing contaminants. We know from the BP Gulf disaster that such contaminants sink into sediments of the water, killing plant life and fish. And storms can stir it up and spread it farther. My concern is the people who might be fishing in a nearby McKinstry Brook or relying on the groundwater for their drinking water." This was submitted by Mike Marchetti, and he's a Southbridge resident. And I just want to go on record as saying, probably for the fourth time, that I told, I reported that they were bringing soil with contaminated arsenic in it. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh yeah, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Landman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the Town Manager. I just noticed this actually on Main Street, if you could have Mr. Daley probably look at it. So we have a globe on order for streetlights. There's one globe broken right by the Dunkin' Donuts area on Main Street.
We'll, we'll look at it.
And that set of lights, I noticed they're all on Main Street except for that set right up by there tonight, so I don't know if it's a timing issue or anything. It's the Main Street whole lights.
The one, I know we looked at this before, there's four that are right in front of Dunkin' Donuts, and there is some wiring issue that's been there. I believe those lights have been out for some period of time. But let me look at it again, because I probably looked at that about two years ago.
Yeah, and the globe thing I just noticed, actually. And this, through you, Madam Chair, this actually pertains to you. I totally understand that you do set the meeting dates. I'm just going to offer a suggestion. January 7th, we have scheduled coming up on Agenda Item 18, but I would suggest if we could possibly make it to 14th and the 28th, just because the 21st is Martin Luther King's, that'd be the following Monday, and the 14th, 28th, it just gives us an extra break during these holiday times. And then the only thing we would have to do, obviously, is we probably, the 28th, and probably have to have a meeting the following week. So we would have two back-to-back meetings, it'd be the last January and the 1st of February. But I was hoping you'd look into that and consider it.
What's the holiday, there was a holiday issue in June, two besides Martin Luther...
The 21st is, I think, Martin Luther King Day. I believe that's correct.
We can make an amendment.
There's a reason we did the 7th, too, and I can't remember now, offhand. I know we're looking at the 28th and potentially the following Monday, because then there's also a holiday in...
In June.
In February. Yeah, so there's back-to-backs. The other, the other thought that I'd had, since we're all sitting here, was, you know, while we have to have two a month, how specific is it that it's the Monday versus, say, a Tuesday if it's not a school committee meeting? And would that ever be a consideration to Council members? Not something you do regularly, but obviously when you end up with a couple of holidays, if we have back-to-backs, it's, it's less productive, I think, than when we have a space in between for holding meetings and getting the work done before we have a regular meeting. So that was something that I had brought up and discussed a little bit with Yvonne, actually, and, and the Town Manager. But since we're all sitting here, there's a, it's just a thought, but, you know, I'd love input on that down the road, if you want to just send me an email or whatever. But, just as a backup plan.
Thank you.
But I will look at that and we'll see what we can do about the date.
Thank you. And last but not least, I want to wish my fellow counselors, and the Town Hall employees, and all the residents of the community a very Merry Christmas, and have a happy and safe, healthy New Year. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all set.
Thank you. Council Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my request is a follow-up to Mr. Buxton's comments during Citizens Forum regarding the budget process. And Mr. Clark and his finance team do a very comprehensive, provide us with a very comprehensive package to, to look at during the budget process. And I apologize, I'm, I don't remember everything that's in there, because there's a whole bunch of statistical information in there, but if we could do something, if you don't already, discretionary spending versus fixed costs. Because when we talk about the annual increase of the taxes, the baseline being new growth and the two and a half percent, in many cases, in ours, and in many communities' cases, that number, for us, is about $400,000, maybe?
I'm not, I'm not quite following.
New growth plus two and a half percent.
New growth, 400, yes.
It's about $400,000 a year, annual, yes. And my point is, if you really look at that and look at our increase in fixed costs, that being insurances, pensions, that, that really eats, eats that up. So, I separate the two, fixed costs versus those costs that you don't really have control over, they increase every year significantly, they take up that portion of the increase. And, so you look at the discretionary spending, and I would bet that the discretionary spending is more flat-lined. And this was my point a number of years ago, when we changed the process we had with allocating out between school and town, as far as discretionary spending goes, because the fixed costs are budgeted on the town side. And I had asked at that time that they be netted out, and that's been done, and I think correctly. So, I would just ask if maybe you could put something together that shows that, the increase in discretionary spending, fixed costs, versus what that baseline increase in taxes are each year. I think that might be helpful for some of us to, to analyze the budget a little better. That was it, other than Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Macucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, where are we as far as the audit for the Police Department?
I believe that there's going to be a PPP Subcommittee in early January, and we'll have a discussion about the scope of what, I, it is my intent to put together a couple of versions of scope, how extensively the, the town wishes to pursue this, and then try to put some dollar figures with that. I think, as was indicated before, I, I need to get an appropriation before I kind of go out and seek to start to do that work.
Thank you very much. And, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor McDonald, that this is your last meeting with us?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe, okay. Well, if it is, I just want to wish you the best at your, your new position in Monson. And I want you to know, excuse me, as a, as a counselor, your knowledge of local and state government and our charter has been very enlightening to me as a counselor. I haven't had that much time to serve with you, but I just want you to know from myself that, that it's been a pleasure, and you've educated me quite a bit. So I wish you luck.
Thank you, and likewise.
And, let me see. I, I think that's it, other than to wish everybody in the Town Hall, and my counselor, my counselors here, and everyone in the town of Southbridge a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and please love and enjoy your family. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council. Council Palahin?
A citizen had called me to complain about safety issues at the intersection of Marcy Street and Dresser Street. It's not too far from where I live, and I've noticed that it's, there's been a number of accidents recently at that intersection. And I know that, from what I understand, there's some sort of regulations about how often you can have stop signs or lights or anything, and I don't know if this is something that you could potentially look at in terms of a waiver down the line eventually, but it is a very unsafe intersection. I'd like to express that I, I share those concerns. And I'd also like to say, happy holiday season to everybody here on the council, and I hope that everybody has a happy and prosperous New Year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Likewise, my sentiments go out to everyone here, that you have a wonderful holiday season, and that we all have a very blessed New Year. Good things to come for our town. I would also like to do a little economic boost and say, remember, we do have great shopping opportunities. If you are out there doing a little shopping, spend some time locally. There are some nice places to buy things. There's great antique shops, there's great plant stores and food establishments with gift certificates, so shop at home, shop locally, and, and give the gift that keeps giving here in our community would help everybody out by supporting locally. And, next meeting date, currently it's set for January 7th, but as we've said before, that could change, always notifying you at, at least 48 hours in advance. But currently, the next meeting date will be Monday, January 7th, here in Council Chambers, and I believe that the chairwoman will be back for that, so, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Gavel. (inaudible).[1715.41]